Mr. Rice is joining us. Hello. I'm going to call the, this meeting of June 5th of the Missoula Consolidated Planning Board to order. Heather, will you please do the roll call?
Andy Medford. Andy Medford is absent. Niva Hasnen?
She's here.
Niva Hasnen is here. Michael Hulahan?
Here.
Michael Hulahan is here. Dudley Imprada?
Here.
Dudley Imprada is here. Jason Rice?
Here.
Jason Rice is here. Jamie Hoffman?
Here.
Jamie Hoffman is here. Stephanie Potts?
Here.
Stephanie Potts is here. Vince Caristo? Vince Caristo is absent. Peter Benson?
Here.
Peter Benson is here. John Newman? John Newman is absent. Helen Jenkins?
Here.
Helen Jenkins is here. And with a member of the county absent, Peter Benson will be a voting member this evening, and we do have a quorum.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, if I could, next on the agenda, we're going to move on to approval of the minutes for the April 17th meeting. I don't know if there's any discussion, but I would entertain a motion to approve.
I move that the minutes be approved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Niva. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Let's see here. Do we have any public comment on items not on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Any staff comments? Nope. Okay. Great, we have two public hearings this evening. The first is the West Point plat adjustment, which is a county hearing for, presented by Jamie. So, take it away. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. So, on April 26th of 2018, Community and Planning Services received a request from Circle H Investments.
Jamie, can you speak into the mic a little bit?
Yep, sorry about that. So, we received this request on April 26th, and it is from Circle H Investments, represented by WGM Group. It's for a final plat adjustment for properties legally described as Lot 24 of West Point Phase 1, addressed as 6661 Patent Court and the Common Area of West Point Phase 1. The request would shift a boundary between Lot 24 and the large common area adjacent to the property. So, I always forget when I do my slideshow that this screen is different than the Commissioner's, so sorry about that. It's a little hard to see. These properties are located north of I-90, and they're accessed off of Butler Creek Road. Once in the subdivision, both the common area and Lot 24 can be accessed off of Patent Court. The subdivision is south of Circle H Ranch and north of the properties accessed off of Gooden Lane and Keel Loop. West Point subdivision was approved in 2001. The subdivision consists of 240 lots on 72.95 acres. The subdivision and zoning were done in conjunction with the Circle H Ranch development to the north, which together totaled a planned development area of 972 acres. The planned development clustered home sites and resulted in large contiguous open space areas. Over the years, several extensions and phasing plan amendments have been granted, which have also resulted in a few condition modifications. The most recent phasing plan extension was granted in April of 2018. This extended the preliminary plat deadline for Phases 4 and 5 to 2021. As part of the original subdivision, 11% common area dedication was required with each phase of the subdivision. Phase 1 includes 9.09 acres of allotted area, 10.63 acres of common area, and 4.98 acres of streets, for a total of 24.70 acres in this phase. The dedicated common area with Phase 1 amounts to 43% of the subdivided area. So, now moving on to the specifics of this request. This subdivision, when approved, was zoned East Butler Creek Foothills Rural Zoning District, which allows lots within Area C Sub-District to be 3,400 square feet for detached dwelling units. This request only modifies the boundaries between Lot 24 and the common area. It will not affect any land outside of the subdivision or any other lot within the subdivision. The existing common area adjacent to Lot 24 is 9.05 acres, and Lot 24 is 4,867 square feet. As I previously mentioned, the allotted common area will exceed the required 11% dedication, and since this adjustment will increase the square footage of Lot 24, zoning compliance and compliance with the subdivision regulations will be maintained. The request is compliant with the growth policy and the 1997 Butler Creek Area Plan. Patent Court, as seen above, that consists of 15 lots. All of these lots have existing homes on them or homes that are under construction, with the exception of lots 31, 32, 19, 20, and 24. Lots 31, 32, and 20 are all rectangular in shape and do not appear to have any land constraints. Lot 19 is unique in shape, however, the architect has been working on house plans for this lot. Lot 24, the subject lot, is also unique in shape, in that it is the only lot on the cul-de-sac out of lots 23 through 28 that do not have a parallel rear lot line to the common area. Rather, the rear lot line on 24 bears a distance of 18.53 feet, and then angles slightly north, continuing for another 66.05 feet. The specific reason for this request is to allow a home to be built on Lot 24 that will be similar in design to those existing and proposed homes with regards to overall shape and square footage. To avoid noncompliance with the zoning, and rather than asking for a variance, the applicant has opted for this plat adjustment request. So, now looking at the proposed lot configuration, we can see the adjusted boundary. This adjustment will reduce the common area by 659 square feet, or approximately 0.2% of the existing common area, and 0.01% of the total subdivided area. The connectivity within the common area will not be segregated by this proposal. The 659 square feet of land is similar slope to that of Lot 24, and therefore is considered buildable. The proposed adjustment will have no effect on the trails planned as approved by the Commissioners on December 18th of 2006. No other conditions were found to conflict with the proposed amendment. Impacts to wildlife were mitigated by the use of common areas. Lot 24 is on the southwest end of the common area, where the common area is at its narrowest already. The proposed adjustment will not create a narrower connection between the common area fronting on MacArthur Drive than that that already exists between Lot 6C, which is on the south end, and Lot 23. The developer for West Point has stated that this is the only boundary adjustment proposed by his group, and therefore this should not be seen as a series of adjustments that will be proposed with this subdivision. So, just a real quick overview of the process for final plat adjustments. In November of 2016, the BCC adopted a new process for adjustments to file plats and related documents. The reason for this adjustment was to allow the public to comment and provide input on these types of requests. So, as required, we ran a legal ad notified by Certified Mail, property owners within 300 feet, and sent out for agency notification. The rest of the process requires review and approval by the Planning Board and the Board of County Commissioners under Section 6.6.4 of the subdivision regulations. The criteria for review include that the requested changes are minor in nature, that the changes comply with the regulations, and that they will not reduce the protections and safeguards provided by the subdivision regulations. No new impacts can be created, and the changes will be consistent with the growth policy and the findings of fact and conclusions of law adopted with the subdivision. The request shall not be a series of incremental requests, and changes to the subdivided area shall be considered. However, economic changes should not be taken into consideration. We solicited for agency comments and only received two responses, one from County Parks Trails and Open Space, and the other from Public Works, neither of which had concerns. We did not receive any public comment from the neighboring property owners, though we did receive two letters returned undeliverable. So, short and sweet, but based on the findings I've just presented and the rest that are in the staff report and conclusions, we are recommending approval of this request.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Is there a representative for the applicant that would like to speak today? Yes?
No need to speak.
Okay. Wonderful. I will now open it up to the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this issue? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up to Planning Board members. Any comments? Yes, Vince. Oh, let the record show that Vince Caristo has joined the Planning Board. Thank you.
And since there is a member of the city absent, you will be a voting member this evening.
My basic question is, what was the property owner trying to do that wasn't permitted without this really minor change?
So, the homes that are already built or are under construction, they kind of have a model design, and they want to build that same model design on this lot, but it doesn't fit and still comply with the setbacks. So, with this, yes. So, with this adjustment, the boundary line will shift, which then shifts the setback line.
Other comments or questions?
I had a quick question for you, Jamie. You made reference to a 1997 Butler Creek neighborhood plan. Curious to know when that update's going to happen. That area has changed quite a bit.
Andrew, is that happening with the whole area?
The land is going to be updated.
Yes?
It's going to be updated.
Okay.
Okay. TBD. Okay. Other comments or questions?
Make a motion that we approve the request for the plat adjustment.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? Okay, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to a city item, presented to us by Emily Scher for a Title 20 update of the proposed historic demolition permit revisions.
My name's Emmy Scher. I'm the Historic Preservation Officer for the city. Thank you for having me today. This is kind of a lengthier revision, so I'm not going to read everything verbatim, but I'm going to walk us through it step by step. First of all, I'm going to kind of talk about historic preservation in Missoula in general, just so we are all on the same page moving forward, and then walk through what our revisions So, as far as this proposed update, it's for the demolition portion of our Historic Preservation Permit Ordinance, and it only applies to buildings that are individually listed on the National Register of Historic Places. So, there's a lot of confusion. There's a lot of signs out there that say contributing, but those aren't all individually listed. So, in Missoula, we only have 62 buildings that would be affected by this. So, that's important to remember. Also, it's very rarely used that we actually demolish individually listed buildings. We've only actually done that once in our past. So, it's another thing to keep in mind that this isn't a usual occurrence, but when it does happen, it has a lot of impact on the community. The National Register of Historic Places is the official federal list of districts, sites, buildings, structures, and objects significant in American history, architecture, archaeology, engineering, and culture. So, in Missoula, our local list of historic resources, if you will, is everything that's listed on the National Register. Other states and cities have their own lists, but we only go by the national standards. And we do have a very historic town. We have our historic downtown core, University of Montana, Fort Missoula, Forest Service, University District. So, there is a lot of history in this place, and it does define our place of Missoula. So, as far as our ordinance that we have it, we have 2030, which is Historic Preservation, and then we have 2085-085, which is what we're going to be talking about today, which is just for the permit. But 2030, the city recognizes that our community contains irreplaceable historic resources that significantly enhance our sense of place and cultural heritage. So, things to remember is that listing on the National Register is voluntary, and it's to be elected by the property owner. So, we can't go in and say we want to list this property unless we own it, if that makes sense. Some people think that you can list buildings on behalf of property owners, but they have to instigate it, and they have to want it to be listed. So, they're pretty aware that they have, you know, a property that is significant, and they want some level of protection for it. They're the ones who are going out and electing to do this. Once it is listed, there is a different, you know, body of law, the National Historic Preservation Act, and so that's what I do as a Historic Preservation Officer, is oversee all the alterations under that law for our individually listed buildings in Missoula. And not unlike resources within the natural environment, the National Register, the purpose is really to safeguard these resources within our built environment. So, it's supposed to, you know, go into communities and compile a list of what we see as significant in our city and what we want to recognize as being historically significant within our past. It does, the status of being on the National Register does travel with the property, but an owner may delist it. It is still private property, so there is still that option. And it doesn't alter any property insurance or anything like that. So, things to consider. So, our proposal is to expand the existing Section J, which is the demolition portion and associated subsections of Title 2085-085 regarding the demolition removal of historic resources, those individually listed properties, with revisions for clarity, which includes subsections, increased timeline, more detailed requirements for assessing economic feasibility, consultation, and mitigation, as well as a clause that the final demolition permit and building permit will be granted together. So, you do have to bring a redevelopment plan in in order to get your demolition permit. So, that's one major new thing to this. And the amendments do meet Section 2085-040. So, a little background, why we're doing this proposal and why we're doing these edits is the existing language was put to test last two years ago, two years ago, last year. And it did prove that it lacked clarity and it lacked substance to guide the Historic Preservation Commission and the applicant. So, it was messy, and there was a clear need that was requested by the Historic Preservation Commission to update our language and to add clarity. And so, that's what we did with this, and we followed the same format that we have existing. We just added to it based off of what we learned. So, the process with this up to now, in the summer of 2016, that's when concerns were raised about the lack of information and lack of clarity in the language in the existing ordinance. It's also extremely brief, so it didn't really have any guiding properties for our Historic Preservation Commission. In August of last summer, the Historic Preservation Commission was consulted, and we did a kind of a group think tank with Councilmember Gwen Jones to gain a better understanding of their concerns and what they went through and what they could see would better this ordinance. In January, the Land Use and Planning Committee directed staff to hold a public hearing for Planning Board for this. So, we presented kind of the initial drafts back in January, and we've gone through a few iterations since then. In February, brought it to HPC, and they reviewed the draft language and made comments, which we integrated into this current draft. In April, sent a letter out to all property owners who have listed buildings on the National Register, kind of informing them of what we're doing, and sought comment, and we did not receive any comments from any property owners. We also held an informational open house in April, and we did not have anyone show up for that. Then, in April, we followed up with the Missoula Organization of Realtors, just to get their thoughts on this as well, and they had concerns, which we've been addressing, and we have addressed and integrated their concerns within this current draft. So, they saw an older version of this as well. And then, in May, we sent out agency and public comment request, and we received no agency comments and one public comment, which was pro, if you will. So, this is the broader 2085-85, the intent, and it's essentially to, you know, protect, identify, enhance our historic resources in this city. So, that includes the architectural, artistic, cultural, engineering, aesthetic, historical, political, economic, social, and any other heritage that we do want to protect. So, we have that in place. And this is the existing language of Section J. So, this is what the Historic Preservation Commission had to work with when they received their demolition permit in summer of 2016. And what is highlighted, the red, is kind of what caused issues, because it is so vague. What does consulted mean? What does a good faith effort really mean? How does one go about finding an alternative? Good faith efforts to find a purchaser, again, what does that mean? Prevent all reasonable economic use, supporting documentation, and it allowed for a delay of 90 days for the Historic Preservation Commission to review. So, those were the main guiding things that we looked at when we rewrote this and kind of fleshed out those pieces as much as we could to provide an adequate toolkit for the Historic Preservation Commission, as well as to applicants, so they know better what they're expected to do and go through. So, we just wanted to streamline the process, make it so we wouldn't have these problems that we ran into before. And there's no need to rewrite the book. We basically took this, we enhanced it, and we fleshed it out pretty much entirely on the experience of what we went through and how the existing language was actually put to the test and did not work very well. So, the overall changes, again, we just fleshed it out based off of what was lacking. So, we added subsections, including an intent applicability definitions. There were no definitions before application overview. We increased the timeframe for the HPC to review the application from 90 days to 120 days, and that was a request by the HPC. We did more detailed pre-application requirements, which is not actually all that new. We'd like for that to happen with historic preservation permits. We just haven't codified it yet. More detailed consultation requirements with the state as well. So, we reached out to the state and asked what they thought good practice was and implemented that. Expanded detail for typical types of information that address economic feasibility. Expanded detail for mitigation. And then, again, the big new part is that a clause of the final demolition or relocation permit will be granted only after a final building permit has been submitted to the city, and then evidence that all other requirements were met. So, the intent, the main things in order to receive a demolition permit of an individually listed building, and things that we actually were able to verbalize from what we learned, is that to obtain a historic demolition permit, here and after, we can just call it permit, denying the application would cause unreasonable economic hardship to the viability of the property, that the applicant has made a bona fide effort to find a reasonable alternative that would result in the preservation, renovation, or adaptive reuse of the historic resource, and that conditions necessary to mitigate the effects of approved demolition or relocation are developed. So, it's the same thought, we're just actually clarifying what we're looking for. And then, as well, of intent is to ensure that if a historic resource is removed, redevelopment of the site is done in a way that mitigates that loss, because we are establishing that this is a resource in the community, and that we don't want it to be replaced with, say, a parking lot. So, that's another thinking behind the redevelopment plan. Applicability, again, it's just for properties that are individually listed on the National Redevelopment shall not include plans which leave the site without buildings or structures unless the existing character of the area did not include structures, which possibly could happen. Everything else within the chapter. And then, we put in that, a statement that every permit application is going to be different. So, we have, you know, houses, residential houses that are listed all the way to the Wilma. So, it's going to be different projects every time, and the effect of that is going to be very different every time. So, knowing that, you know, the scale will be thought about, it will be proportionate to review, and what we're assessing, it will be on an individual basis. So, if the Wilma was slated for demolition, we'll probably look at that a little bit different than if, you know, a small craftsman in the university was slated for demolition. So, moving on, basically, when it comes to historic preservation demolition permits, we look at economic hardship procedure, as well as everything that I listed there, the consulted, good faith effort, finding an alternative, finding a purchaser, documentation, timing, mitigation. What it comes down to in terms of the Historic Preservation Commission role is to assess whether an economic hardship is taking place. Economic hardship is defined as consistent with the legal standard for an unconstitutional regulatory taking, which requires a property owner to establish that he or she has been denied all reasonable beneficial use or return on the property as a result of the commission's denial of a permit. So, that's essentially what the HPC is tasked with legally. That's their quasi-judicial role. From that, we're fleshing out, okay, what do you turn in in order to understand that from the applicant and for the HPC. As the Supreme Court noted in Penn Central Station versus New York City, courts will examine whether a historic property owner can earn a reasonable return, whether the property is economically viable in its present use or form. So, those are just kind of some guiding languages that I went off of and used that from the National Trust for Historic Preservation, Economic Effects of Drafting Effective Historic Preservation Ordinances, as well as a lot of other ordinances around the country. So, none of this is brand new. It's being done everywhere, basically. We looked at Portland, Spokane, Eugene, Bellingham, Oakland, New Orleans, Washington, D.C., and that's where we crafted a lot of this language from, other communities who have had to go through this before, and many communities haven't had to go through this So, those are kind of the four main tenants, the reasonable return, economic viability, whether it's feasible to rehabilitate it, which would all offer alternative uses, and then putting it on the market to see if anyone else would be interested in saving the building rather than demolishing it. So, again, we're just trying to take away any ambiguousness that existed before. So again, we're just trying to take away any ambiguousness that existed before. And as we were writing this, we also based it off of the Development Agreement for the Mercantile. So this is really similar to that, and the requirements that was put together for that as well. So now I'll just walk you through what we've done. And if you want to follow along, I'm going to point out which sections correlate to what. So to start off with, we have Stage One, so we have two stages altogether, and I'll talk about that as I go through. For Stage One, the first step essentially is codified in Section Six, and that's the pre-application requirements. And it includes kind of consultation, which wasn't actually stated in the existing ordinance. And as historic preservation officer, I usually meet with all applicants for any alterations ahead of time anyway. We don't mandate it, but it is good practice. So here, we're just saying that we want this to happen every time. And that's to ensure that consultation is happening, and you're starting that dialogue, and you're going to be on the same page as you move through this process. It also includes an advisory presentation to the Historic Preservation Commission so that they know what's coming down the pike too. So no one's just thrown into this having not known that this was coming. The consultation should happen at least 30 days prior to submitting the permit application, and that's so that the HPO can work with the applicant in actually submitting an application that is complete. It's very often that applicants turn in applications that aren't complete, and then I have to send it back over and over and over for revision. So really, this speeds up the process by mandating that. After they do an advisory presentation to the Historic Preservation Commission, then they submit the draft application to the Historic Preservation Officer, which brings us to Section Seven. That's Historic Preservation Officer Review. And again, this isn't any different than what we already have in the existing 85-085. So the Historic Preservation Officer shall review and deem the application sufficient in accordance with what we already have, which is 2085-085-D and F as applicable. And then also, we included that the HPO does reserve the right to seek outside third-party consult, because this is pretty complicated stuff that we'll be evaluating in terms of economic feasibility, asking other professionals in the field for help. And that's at no cost to the applicant, too. So then, we move on. The Historic Preservation Officer deems the permit application sufficient, so they've included everything that was required. Then the HPO sends it out for public notice for 15 days, that's not changing, that's the same, and 15 days for the SHPO to review it as well, the State Historic Preservation So as far as review criteria, this is new language that we put in. Again, whether the structure, this is what the HPC will be looking at, the HPO, still maintains viable economic life, whether it's capable of generating a reasonable economic return, whether the applicant has made a bona fide effort to find a reasonable alternative, and whether sufficient mitigation efforts have been met, including to documentation, mitigation, redevelopment, deconstruction. And again, this is kind of following what we did with the Merck and the Development So then, it moves on, as it did before, to the Historic Preservation Commission Review, and that's Section Eight. And they have, before it was 90 days, they have no less than 30 days and no more than 120 days for them to reach a final decision. So we added 30 more days onto that, which is pretty normal practice from all the other ordinances I've read. And the application requirements for preliminary pre-reviewal, so we've, like I said, we have two sections, two stages. The first is Historic Preservation Commission Review, so turning in everything for economic feasibility, determining economic hardship, that's what we're calling the preliminary approval. And that includes the Certificate of Economic Hardship, a feasibility study, demonstrating that the resource is incapable of generating a reasonable economic return, bona fide attempt to rent, sell, or relocate the resource, and any other documentation that would be specific to that project. So if you go to Section 10, the purpose, again, to submit this, the burden of proof is on the applicant, and it's, you know, to prove whether the structure does or does not maintain viable economic life. And before, we didn't have what that meant, or what they should turn in, or what the Historic Preservation Commission should review, and now we've bulleted it out, exactly what the applicant needs to turn in in order to determine whether it is a hardship or not. The Certificate of Economic Hardship, I found from a manual on how to write ordinances on economic hardship. So this is straight from the book. What we did do is, after the Missoula Organization of Realtors comment, we kind of adjusted a lot of things around, and we made some things optional. And that's up to the applicant if they want to turn that in or not. But everything else is mandatory. As far as the feasibility study, it's, you know, actually having a licensed architect or engineer go in and establish whether it is actually feasible to maintain this building or not. We kind of extended the bona fide attempt to rent, sell, or relocate resource, which isn't new, we had that before, but we added language such as the applicant must advertise using a licensed real estate broker, illustrate that asking price was comparable to the value of equivalent local structures listed on a multiple listing service, before we had just in the newspaper for 30 days. And people don't really look at the newspaper that often for historic buildings. And they have to do that for 90 days within the past six months to submitting an application. So then it reaches the public hearing. The Historic Preservation Commission has had their 30 to 100 days to review, using their review criteria for economic hardship, for alternatives, based on the submitted evidence on behalf of the applicant. And then they can approve, or deny, or approve with conditions, which is the same as we have it now. Say they did preliminarily approve it, then it would move on to Stage Two, which would be final approval review. And we kind of set this up so that the Historic Preservation Commission is doing their job of economic hardship, and then we're kind of going back to the applicant working with the HPO, the Historic Preservation Officer, on a more consulting, closer, face-to-face way, so that we can actually come up with viable mitigation efforts if this building is going down. So for that, the HPO will work with the applicant in establishing a documentation plan, mitigation plan, redevelopment plan, and deconstruction plan. And again, we followed the Merck Development Agreement similarly, and that was what happened in the past, and it worked pretty well. And it's a good way to go about it, a lot of other ordinances use this kind of two-step So once the HPO and the applicant has come up with these plans, the applicant can submit that to the HPO and then do an advisory presentation to the Historic Preservation Commission on what we're thinking the plans will be. So that way, we have everyone involved. The HPO has a little bit of help from the HPC, but we're not having to go through all of this in committee meetings, if that makes sense. It is just advisory, so they don't have to take that, they just have to take it into So, as far as the redevelopment plan, it could just be a sketch plan, we're not asking for, you know, pre-final architectural, to-the-point renderings. We're just wanting to make sure that what they're planning on doing is sensitive to the significance of the site, because at one point, there was a significant building there. So ensuring that that sensitivity is happening, and making sure that, again, the advisory is going to the HPC. So they go through that, and they have two years from the preliminary approval to turn in all of these mitigation requirements. And that doesn't mean they have to take two years. So that's more for the applicant to use that time if they want. They could take 30 days if they've been on it, and they could do all of this mitigation stuff while they're doing the Stage One, too. So two years sounds shocking, but it's more giving them enough time to complete what we're asking mitigation-wise. So then it goes back to the Historic Preservation Officer Review, and they turn in their final application materials, which includes the documentation plan, which we already did require, but we just fleshed out the language so that we have more Secretary of Interior Standards language in there for the National Register, which is what we undergo when we're doing these permits. We didn't have anything like that in there before. So Historic American Building Survey Quality Procedure is what we're asking, and that's just good practice when you're taking down an individually listed building. Mitigation Plan, so the muse part of the mercantile was kind of a mitigation effort. That would be an example of coming up with a mitigation plan for adverse effect. The redevelopment plan, like I said, just making sure that the site is, redevelopment is sensitive to the significance of the site, and requiring that the projects are deconstructed, the buildings are deconstructed rather than demolished. So the Historic Preservation Officer shall determine whether any conditions or the requirements of preliminary approval have been substantially met. And then the clause that the final demolition permit will not be issued until the building permit for redevelopment is approved by the Historic Preservation Officer. So that's just the HPO making sure that substantially what they agreed on in the beginning when the sketch plans were submitted are the same, not identical, but enough. And then the Historic Preservation Officer shall finally approve the permits for demolition and subsequent rebuilding. So we have a checklist, Stage One and Stage Two. Exceptions, we put in a clause about exceptions, just because we are asking, you know, a decent amount of information, but it's possible that some of that information is not available, so there can be exceptions to that, and based on, you know, the size and scale of the proposal. The appeals process is not changing, so that's the same as is existing. And then as far as comments, we received comments from the Historic Preservation Commission very early in the process, back in February, and we did integrate all of their thoughts into this version. We did receive comments from the Missoula Organization of Realtors, and that was two drafts ago. So for that, we did listen to them, and we integrated a lot of their suggestions. In Section Five, we added language in order to clarify that two-year rule, so it's not that it's going to take two years, it's that they have two years. Clarified that outside third-party consult is at no cost to the applicant. We reworked the roles and added review criteria, which we didn't have before, to clarify the unfettered authority concern, and just kind of added language as to who does what, just to make that clear. We reworked the certificate of economic hardship provisions to have those ones that I stated were optional. And generally, we kind of clarified the advisory role of the HPC in Step Two. We removed excess repetition, tightened up language, and added references to cross-sections. And we did receive one comment from the public, and we implemented all of those comments as well, except for the 21-day SHPO notice timeframe, just because our public process agency timeframe in Missoula is 15 days, and so we wanted to keep it all 15 days for all agencies. But I did reach out to SHPO, and they are fine with that. And then there's the subsections which go with it, what you can see in red. There's D, which is application filing, so unless otherwise expressly stated, we added. And then, commission action on historic preservation permit applications, taking away the 90 days for their time period, and saying, just to see this specific section for procedures, since it is a little different, a little more complicated than what we had before. And so our recommended motion is that Missoula City Council approve an ordinance to amend Title 2085-085 Historic Preservation Permit, Section J, as well as all the applicable So that's what I got.
Okay, thank you. And I need to clarify your name, because it's written differently on two different documents. It's Emmy, is that right?
I go by Emmy, my name's Emily.
Okay.
You can choose.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Emmy. Okay, so are there any, I need to open this up to the public hearings, or are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this issue? Yes. Brian, if you can come up to the mic and just state your name for the record, please?
Thank you. My name's Brian Upton. I'm a resident of Missoula, and I mostly, I submitted a public comment on this, and I do appreciate the responsiveness of the Historic Preservation Officer and everybody in looking at the public comments and making revisions. I'm mostly here just to see what the discussion is, but I did want to register some citizen support for this, after we see what happened with the demolition of the Broadway Market and what replaced it, and the Missoula Mercantile and what replaced it, and the potential pending demolition of the Willard School. I think it's fair to say that the historic preservation landscape in Missoula is highly insecure. I'm very concerned about that, I think a lot of citizens are. So I understand that this amendment doesn't necessarily reach all of those situations, but I think this is a very good step in the direction for trying to protect what we have here in the community's best interests. So I hope that this proposed revision finds a lot of support with your board and with the city council, and I just wanted to register that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up to Planning Board members. Comments or questions?
I have a question.
Dudley.
So, probably for Emily. It's a lot of pressure to put on the HPO if a popular mayor comes out for demolition before the Historic Preservation Commission looks at it. But, regardless, an owner, once listed, the new owner can delist the building.
Correct.
Can the current owner decide to delist it once it's listed?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can delist, yeah.
And then...
It's a longer process than this, and it goes through city council, but you can do it.
So a current owner can change it?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other comments? Yes, Peter.
Is there an equivalent body to you that deals with government buildings, whether they're federal, state, or county?
As far as the federal buildings, there is. So, the federal government takes care of all of their buildings, and it's Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. So, they have an equivalent body that they do for federal buildings.
Okay. Well, to follow up on the previous question, then, does, if someone were to delist it so that they could demolish it, how much work would they be required of them to do that?
They would have to go through city council and state Y, then they'd have to go through the state as well and state Y. No one's gonna, it's pretty rare that it happens, to be honest.
Okay.
But it would take longer than this. I read it'd take probably about six months or more to get something delisted.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? Yes, Jamie.
I'm not clear. A property owner can request that their property be delisted, and once it's delisted, it still has to go through a review?
No.
So, he'd have to go through the delisting effort or process?
Right.
And once that was completed, he would know, that property would no longer be subject to this ordinance?
Correct.
Is the county subject to the city's, to this ordinance with regard to is its intent to demolish some of the buildings at the fairgrounds?
No. So, the county, none of their listed buildings are subject to this. It's only individually listed buildings within city boundaries, and none of the buildings actually in the county are individually listed. They're part of a historic district.
At the fairgrounds?
Mm-hmm.
The fairgrounds is a city, is in the city. It's not in the county, is that true?
Yeah. It's in the city, but it's county property, but there aren't any individually listed buildings there.
I see.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And Willard School's not subject to city ordinances, because that's owned by the...
Right.
Missoula County.
Exactly.
Or schools.
Did you have a question?
So, I, first of all, I want to thank you for all the work that it seems like you've put into this, and the effort and the research, and calling these ideas from a lot of different parts of the country. And so, my question is, in reference to Section 7, Section D, the one where you talk about reserving the right to seek outside consult, it's sort of minor, but I just was wondering why it says "from qualified professionals in western Montana"? That seems like a sort of small boundary to be drawing, and that, I mean, there could be someone in Wallace, Idaho, who has experience with this. There could be somebody in Helena. There could be somebody in New Orleans or Traverse City, Michigan, and so I'm just curious as to why that language was put in there, and if there's any option for making that a little bit of a broader...
Yeah, there is option for that, and I think we put that in there just because we didn't want to overstep our boundaries. And we were thinking that if we kept it local, people would be more aware of our local historic resources and the history of our local place and the development of Missoula, why a historic resource here would have its significance, if you will, just more kind of knowledge base of this place here. But it is open, I mean, we could, that could be a suggestion.
Okay. That makes sense, though. I see your reasoning there, too. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Nita.
Yes, I echo Stephanie's gratitude, thanks, and to everyone else who worked on this as well. So, I just wanted to be clear, because, so there's no change here with respect to the final decision-maker, right? The last, when the mercantile decision happened, did it end up at city council?
Yeah.
And so, and are we, is this going to fix some of that confusion and frustration people felt at that point?
Yeah. Gwen, would you like to talk to that? I wasn't around for that, but Gwen was.
Well, I was here, but I can't remember the details, so...
Sure, I can, I can speak to that. We spent the entire summer of 2016 on the Merc and the budget, and that was my summer. So, there has to be a better way, and this is a result of, it's an enviable position to be in, to have applied an ordinance, and then get the opportunity to rewrite it. And as I think Emmy covered it at the very beginning pretty well, there was definitely a lack of clarity in the process, lack of definitions, a lot of vagueness. That caused a huge amount of friction and, I'm not sure quite how to say it, but when you have those voids, they can get filled quite easily in the wrong direction, and so this can look daunting. I mean, it's what, eight, 10 pages with boxes, and it looks overwhelming, but I think if you actually had to go through the process and you read through it carefully, it's pretty linear. And that was the point, to make this a process. I mean, the amount of time we spent arguing over what a consultation was, and when did the 30 days for some segment start, was not good. So, I think having a better process, it goes back to the, having a better process is the goal here. It goes back to the original tenets of, if the building cannot feasibly economically make it, then it is a taking to not allow someone to scrape it. So, that underpinning is the same, but to have a better process so that everyone understands is key. And I think something that, if I can find it quickly without my glasses, actually, a really big section that Emmy and I spent a lot of time on, although Emmy did the great majority of this, so I periodically would, would help. But if I can find it, we talked a lot about the fact that what we're trying to do, bottom line, is incentivize someone to come in and buy this property and rehab it and make it useful again. Sometimes you have a philanthropist. That's great, but we cannot require that by the law. We have to go with what the market dictates. But creating a scenario where it is available for sale instead of being demolished is what we're trying to incentivize. It's very difficult. By the time we really looked at a lot of real estate law, it's a very dicey area, and I think that's why we didn't find any incredible ordinances out there in the world that have answered this question. But maybe you can list, there is a national historic listing. Is that the name of it?
Yeah, it's the listing through the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and they have a listing for individually listed buildings.
And I think we emphasized in here that if the earlier this building can go onto that national listing and really get the word out to people who are interested in historic preservation, probably the better chance there is that someone will come in, be it from in-state or out-of-state, and buy it. And that's key, and, you know, we talked a lot with MOR regarding a lot of concepts, because this dips into real estate law, of course, and property law. And I think MOR can do some heavy lifting in terms of educating their realtors and people who handle historical properties, that when something is potentially being thought of as going up for sale, this is the starting point, because that's where you're going to find the buyer. So, I'm kind of rambling here.
Yeah, so just to clarify, Gwen, is, so the, in the, it's always been that the HPO makes these kind of decisions, and it was appealed when we did the mercantile, or is there a change in terms of who's the final arbiter? Because I do think it's kind of tricky to put one person in charge of something like this, and, but, and I guess that the trust thing you're talking about, just to clear, is that kind of similar to what they were trying to do with the Frank Lloyd Wright House or building that was up in Flathead, trying to keep it from being destroyed? You don't remember, or, this spring, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's what you're talking about, trying to bring in people like that who would save it. Got it. Okay, but could you address the, just final arbiter of this decision question? Thanks.
Sure. So, this is the same appeal format, in that if the Historic Preservation Commission and the Historic Preservation Ordinance Officer hear this matter and reach a decision to not allow it to be demolished, then there is an appeal process to the city council, same as with the Merc. If that answers your question?
Yeah, so...
Okay. And you can clarify, I don't think Whitefish even has a Historic Preservation Ordinance. So, totally different scenario than what we have.
It wasn't even flagged.
And, again, getting the word out early is really key. If you want to have someone, there are people interested in saving these buildings, but they can't act on five days' notice, so. And, and since I have the microphone to address Ms. Potts' question regarding the third-party consult being limited to western Montana, part of the rationale for that was if we are, if the Historic Preservation Commission and the officer are doing an analysis regarding economic feasibility of a building, I mean, you have to look at it from all different sides, and if someone brings in an expert from Seattle to discuss how much it will cost to reinforce the unreinforced masonry, those Seattle prices are going to be a lot higher than our Montana prices. So, we wanted to therefore make it regional, because that is our market, as opposed to, well, someone from San Francisco says it's going to cost X amount of dollars. We were trying to build some structure in so that nothing is manipulated, you get a true read on everything.
Thank you, Gwen. Other comments or questions?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
Are we talking about state historical building, city historical building, national historical building? What are we talking here? I see several things listed in here.
So, yeah, that's, that's a good question. We're talking about national historic buildings, so buildings that are listed on the National Register of Historic Places. But who oversees that is the Department of Interior nationally, and then they kind of step down to the State Historic Preservation Office, and they more oversee everything that's nationally listed in the state of Montana, and then that steps down to the HPO, which then oversees everything that's listed in, say, Missoula or a city. So, I respond to the state, and the state responds to the Department of Interior. So, there's kind of a hierarchy there, if that makes sense.
Does the Department of Interior have guidelines as far as these buildings are concerned, when you're talking about demolition and that?
So, that's up to the city, the local city ordinance to put forth these guidelines, and that's why some ordinances are a lot different than others. Some are a lot more strict, some are less strict. But in terms of, they don't have any, there's no laws nationally about demolishing an individually listed building. That's why the county, because there's no ordinance there, can demolish an individually listed building. There's no oversight when it comes to the county. So, it's up to the city municipalities or county municipalities to put forth their own ordinances for their listed buildings.
Okay. I had another question. The Missoula Organization of Realtors, they brought up the Conduct Site Archaeology. What does that mean?
So, we revised it after that, and we just, we did have that as a requirement, and now we moved it into a possible mitigation technique. And so, that's, originally, we had that you had to have an archaeologist come in and do, you know, a study as they're deconstructing, if there's any subsurface significance at all, and then we changed it to a possible mitigation technique if it seemed relevant to that project. So, that was what they were referring to. It was different language. Originally, we were requiring that we had to have an archaeologist come to every site, and now we're saying that we don't.
Yeah, one of their concerns seemed to be that a lot of the, this new proposal was a little bit vague. Do you feel it's vague?
I do not feel it's vague compared to what we had. I think that we left for enough room for the different complexities of projects, but we built a toolkit for the HPC and the applicant, and that was our ultimate goal.
The other thing that the MOR brought up was is that they were very concerned about property owners' privacy as far as price is concerned?
Right. So, we did make some of those concerns as the optional portions of the Certificate of Economic Hardship. So, some of the concerns or the aspects that they're referring to, we made that the applicant can turn that in optionally if they so choose.
So, it's optional?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Did you have more questions, Mike?
Yeah, I do. I'm going through here where I circled, if you don't mind.
Can I add to the answer that Emmy just gave regarding the property transactional costs and the privacy issues? So, based on the Merc, my sense is the great majority, if not all, of applicants would actually divulge those numbers, because it helps prove their case. And if they're ultimately trying to get to an end goal of wanting to demolish the building, they're going to put that information out, but by making it optional, we are not creating a scenario in which we're opening ourselves up to a lawsuit. So, that was the rationale. And if they don't want to bring it, there's still going to be a lot of other information to pull from to determine the feasibility of the building, but that was the route we took.
Okay. Thank you. The other thing they brought up is that the proposed amendment does not define what is meant by conditions of final improvement, approval, excuse me, conditions of final approval. What is that?
So, I think that they had... Some confusion as to conditions and requirements. So, after that, I actually went through and changed the language to make it really clear when we're talking about requirements of this application. And then we put in a review criteria section as well, so that we have review criteria of what we're looking for, and that was after we read the MOR comments as well. So, we didn't have review criteria actually stated in its own section, and now we do. So, we have something that the HPO and the HPC can go from when they are reviewing the requirements.
Yeah, their, their concern was is that the procedural due process of the 14th Amendment of the US Constitution. Are you satisfied that we're not violating that in any way?
I absolutely am.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mike. And it's also been reviewed by the city attorney as well, so.
Same, yeah.
It's also been reviewed by the city attorney as well.
So, I had a, I had a question for you. It sounds like a lot of this was, was driven by the horrible experience from the Merc process, and so, thank you both for taking that on. And one of the things that kind of stays in my mind after having attended a lot of those public hearings was that the Historic Preservation Officer got wrung out. I mean, that poor woman, I felt so bad for her. And, and so I want to make sure, I mean, this, it's very linear, you know, having read through it, there's a lot of steps, but it all kind of builds on itself, so I get it. I just want to make sure that you guys have kind of gone again with the fine-tooth comb to make sure that the expectations of the Historic Preservation Officer are crystal clear, because as Gwen said, when there are voids, they get filled with hate oftentimes, and that was really directed towards that employee. And so, I just want to make sure that doesn't happen again, because we have a chance to fix that.
I think we feel the exact same way. I know I feel exactly the same way stepping into this position after my predecessor and seeing everything that she, she went through. And this is really based off of best practice and what other communities who have gone through this do. So, I really believe that we have crossed our Ts and dotted our Is, but, again, it is kind of fragile things. Historic preservation is always going to be a little challenging, and, and that's just the nature of the beast. But as far as this, I think we've, we've tried to cover everything we possibly could and as it did relate to the Merc, and also as, as it related to a lot of people's reactions to the Merc and who went through it. The HPC, we worked with them for three months drafting this, and city staff has reviewed it, and attorneys, and I, I feel the same way, so I hope so.
And, and while I have you both up there, I had one follow-up question, then I'll...
Can I respond first to, to add on to what Emmy was saying? I think there were a lot of lessons learned, too, in terms of not just the Historic Preservation Officer providing support to the Historic Preservation Commission, but training... Officer providing support to the Historic Preservation Commission, but trainings that needed to be done on procedure that were lacking, and more support that, I think in the future, there would be more wraparound and more support provided by the city to any commission that was faced with this gigantic avalanche coming towards them. We had the most historic building in Missoula being proposed to be taken down by a developer who had a very different set of values. So, there was just a huge culture clash. And, and I think since then, we've actually, city council has revised our questions that we ask of Historic Preservation Commission applicants. And there's a lot of information in there about, will you go to trainings, will you participate in this, et cetera? And the city has stepped up its support in terms of providing trainings. So, so there's, there's some other areas that can be bolstered to make a better situation in the future. And, and I think the Historic Preservation Commission discussion, when we presented three or four months ago, a lot of it centered on the tools that you need to be able to analyze whether or not a building is historically feasible. And it's basically sitting in the position of a judge. It's what city council had to do. None of us, I'm not a developer, I don't know any of this, but you have to gather in the information and just as you guys try and analyze it as best you can. And I think having people on the commission, I mean, city council seats people on the commission, so just making sure that we have an eye on having one or two people who could be leaders if this ever happened again is what we can do to create a better situation.
Thank you. My other question was about the redevelopment plan. So, the, the MOR's comment about, well, you know, why do you need to have frameworks around or barriers around what could be redeveloped on the site? Actually, I kind of feel the opposite way. I think that if we're taking down a historically significant building, you know, the HPO at least, ideally, the commission, you know, has a say as to what goes in. And I understand that you, you know, you've kind of toned that language down a little bit, and it's now more of, you know, it's not like a full design or whatever. But I guess I'm curious to know, like, was that, was that toned-down language because of the MOR? Because I feel like in cities, for example, like Charleston, they don't tone that language down at all, and they require a final, like, you know, architectural plan for that redevelopment.
So, that's a, a great question. It was actually initially written that way, and that was just based off of feedback from our city attorney and other city staff. So, that was based off feedback from doing this also for, for the first time. We never required this before, and we did want to take an even approach with it. We do a lot of things different than, than Charleston. If, if I could, I would write an ordinance very similar to that. But we are still in Missoula, and we're still learning and growing, and we're still a smaller city. So, we wanted this to be approachable and usable for moving forward with this, if that makes sense. Yeah. Do you have anything to add on that?
And I would say also, we still want to incentivize people in the future to list their buildings. And if it becomes, if it is perceived as too onerous, then we will not get any additional buildings listed. So, it was a fine balance in there, and doesn't say that it certainly could be changed in the future after seeing how this plays out for five, 10, 15, 20 years. But there was a fear of going too far and scaring people off, so.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions from planning board? Yes, Michael.
So, so what's the advantage of listing your property as a historical site? Is there an advantage?
There are certain, there's tax credits that you can get. There's state tax credits, federal tax credits, grants, funding available if you do have your building on the National Register. So, people, people like that. It's also just a, you know, a recognition going forth and saying, this is a special place in our community. This is something that we share as a community. Some people list their, their buildings because they see the HPC as a resource. We have, you know, a number of architectural historians. We help out with alterations. We do site visits. It's, it's joining kind of an acknowledgement of recognition there. That answers your question. And in other cities, there's other incentives, too. So, we're, we're working on that as well.
Thank you.
Yes, Vince.
How long does the approval last if, say, someone gets approved to, for demolition? Or?
I believe two years.
It's two years, right?
Two years, yeah. We didn't change that. So, that's in the broader chapter, so.
Okay. When Helen was asking her question, it occurred to me, does the approval go with the property if it was sold? That was sort of a situation that the MOR comments addressed, like, what if it, someone wanted to get approval and then sell the property and not develop it? Would they have to go back through the process?
That's a good question. Yeah, well, we'll ask our city attorney that. We haven't been asked that yet.
Great. I mean, I think most of my other questions were answered. I mean, I think this is, I think you guys did a great job on this. It's a great improvement over the really short process before. And I personally think it's really important. I mean, buildings that have made it to the National Register, they're not only part of the fabric of our community, but they're recognized as part of the fabric of our whole nation's history. And they have a value that kind of transcends any whoever happens to own that building at a particular time for however many years they own it. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Other questions? Niva?
I'd like to make a motion, but before I do, I wanted to ask Stephanie if she had a concern about that particular phrase and whether you want to propose an amendment on that, or?
I'm, I'm...
The phrase about Western Montana?
I, I just was honestly curious about why they chose that, and I feel like the reasoning makes a lot of sense to me for why they need that. So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. So, I would make a motion that the planning board recommend to the Missoula City Council that they approve an ordinance to amend Title 20 dot 85 dot 085 Historic Preservation Permit, Section J, Criteria and Procedure for Review of Relocation and Demolition of Historic Resources, Historic Demolition slash Relocation Permit. I don't think I have to have Attachment A in my motion, but, do I?
I think, yeah, you're fine. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, seconded by Stephanie. Is there further discussion on the motion? Okay, let's vote. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have one special presentation this evening from Andrew Hagmeyer from the County on the Missoula Area Mapping Project, an update.
Forgive me, I was a little late, so I didn't get my presentation on the computer.
No problem, take a minute.
Excuse me, I'm gonna have to leave early, but you still have a, it's just a community announcement. I will go to the open house to hear more detail and buy on.
Thanks, Niva. Let the record show that Niva Hassanan has stepped away.
All right, so, yes, I'm Andrew Hagmeyer. I'm a planner with Missoula County Community and Planning Services, and I am working on a project called the Missoula Area Mapping Project. I've come and presented to you this board, I think, four times now, twice this spring. I kind of just want to do it every time we reach a little bit of a milestone in the project. And we reached another little bit of a milestone in the project. We finished the first round of our public outreach that was conducted over March and April, and we've got that information back. Those reports on the outreach are available on the website that we have, so you can go and take a look at them if you want. And we're going to be kicking off our second round of public outreach. And that's, those are kind of the things that I wanted to cover with you tonight. Just a little refresher, the Missoula Area Mapping Project is a county effort to update the county's land use map and the growth policy. The land use map is an important tool for future planning. It kind of says where we want to grow as a community, where we don't want to grow as a community, and it's really important for things like infrastructure and delivery of services, some of the bigger expenditures, really, that local jurisdictions make. So, it's a, it's really important policy document that we've got. It's a key implementation step of our growth policy. The growth policy, when we updated it in 2016, did not update the land use map. They actually called to update the land use map in sections based off of need. The Missoula area is the fastest-growing location in the county. It definitely has the greatest need to update. That's why we started here first. So, this is where we are in the process. We started out with drafting a planning area profile. That was that document that I came and presented on back in, when it was still snowy, which kind of identified the, really, the key trends in land use that are occurring in the, in the community and how to consider them in our, in our land use update. Once we had that document complete, completed, we went out and we had a, what we're calling Public Outreach Round One, our first round of public outreach. In that first round of public outreach, we really wanted to focus on what people's values were. The land use map should be a representation of our values as a community, visual representation. And so, while the planning area profile focused more on technical stuff, that we hadn't really had a good conversation about values. So, that, that's what we focused on in our first round of outreach. Over the course of the past month, we've been working on reporting back on what we've heard, and we've kind of completed that recently. And so, now, we're moving on to Public Outreach Round Two. Once we're through Public Outreach Round Two, then we'll start working on actually drafting a map. Once we've got a map, we'll go back out to the public and kind of get an idea of whether people like it or not, if we need to change it or not. And then, once that's done, we'll start the adoption process, which will include a hearing with the planning board. So, we had, we had two, kind of three arms of Public Outreach Round One. One arm was a series of workshops that we held. We had five workshops throughout the planning area, so one in Halgate Elementary, one at Target Range Elementary, one out at the barn in West Riverside, it's a Lions Club barn, one at the fire hall in East Missoula, and we held one downtown during the day. We also had this online interactive mapping tool, which I believe I showed you at my last update. And this is kind of what it ended up looking like. It allowed people to take pins and drop them on the, on the landscape to kind of give us an idea where values are and where people wanted to see growth go. People were able to comment on it. You know, the workshops allowed really good interaction with people and really, it gives really good input. I was a little bit nervous about how the interactive mapping tool was going to work. I was, I was kind of worried we were going to get a lot of comments about, I want a McDonald's here, or Walmart here, things that aren't terribly useful. But the comments were actually really good, so I was kind of above my expectations on the content of the comments on the social pinpoint site. Some of the features that didn't really pan out the way I wanted them to were the, was the survey. If you, if you clicked on the website and interacted, it asked you to take the survey. It was clunky, and it just, I think it, it, it just didn't, it didn't, it didn't produce the way I wanted it to. So, that, that was a little bit disappointing, but otherwise, it was great. So, this is, oh, and I also, I should go back and say that the, the third arm of the outreach was I did a number of stakeholder meetings, and anybody who would listen to me, I would come and talk to them. So, I did a number of presentations to different boards and community organizations as well. So, what did we hear? This is specific to the workshop. What we heard, we, one of the questions we had at the workshop was when people came in, we gave them a note card. We said, write down what, what value brought you here tonight? Like, why are you here? What motivated you to come out here? So, people would run on those cards and handed them back to us. The idea was, we, we wanted to, we wanted to check to kind of see if the values that we thought were present in the community or what people coming to the workshop were there. So, we wanted to, it was sort of a test. And overall, the, the values are very much what I think all of us probably expect them to be. But out of the workshops, the top values that people responded to on those cards were affordable housing, open space, and public health and safety related to infrastructure. So, there are a lot of comments about this intersection's unsafe, or this sidewalk, we need to have a sidewalk here. Now, that doesn't mean there weren't a bunch of other values that weren't really important. I just put the top three on here for brevity. And also, I think of interest and note that's important is, this was fairly even across the neighborhoods that we went to, except for Target Range, where they did have a very different set of values, related more to open space and agriculture, and then, safety related to infrastructure. We got enough feedback to kind of start getting some general ideas of where people wanted future growth to go and not grow. So, areas along I-90 west of town, that Broadway, I-90 corridor, right around the airport, people thought that would be, in the future, would be good to have a better mix of uses in that area, more residential development. People, it was pretty good concurrence that there should be a commercial or industrial node out at the Y, which is already kind of there, but, so maybe an expansion of that commercial-industrial node. It was pretty clear that people wanted to preserve agriculture lands along the Clark Fork River Valley west of town. Open space, especially in the North Hills, was something people valued, related specifically to protecting wildlife habitat and also providing recreation and access to recreation on national forest lands. So, I'd like to make that little distinction. There were a lot of comments about open space providing access to national forest lands. A lot of comments about multimodal transportation, a lot of support for multimodal transportation, includes transit, biking, walking, and that there was support for neighborhood nodes, commercial nodes within neighborhoods. So, next steps, we're going to be holding some open houses here starting next week. First one's in East Missoula. We're gonna, once we're done with those open houses, we'll start working on drafting a map, and we'll go back out and do probably some more open houses in September or maybe August if we're real lucky. And then, we'll be coming forward with a, a plan to adopt. We, we made some changes after the first round of outreach. Our initial plan, if you recall, was to start working on a draft map after the first round of outreach. We didn't think we were quite ready. We didn't think the, the comments got us there, and so, we decided it was important in the second, to go back instead of taking a draft map to people in the second round of outreach, was to go back, show people what they said. So, go back to the neighborhoods and said, this is what your neighborhood said. This is what the other neighborhood said. And then, sort of introduce them to some basic concepts, like I was just talking about in those themes, and show them a map of where these locations might be and get feedback on that, and let that kind of evolve into the next logical step for drafting a land use map. So, you know, we're, we're trying to adapt as we, as we get the comment and react to what people are telling us, so. Here's the location of our open house meetings. I'll send you guys an email so you know where they are if you're interested in tending. They're going to be a little bit less formal than the open houses or the workshops, which were, was a two-hour time commitment. The open house meetings are structured, so you can come in, you can go as you wish. So, the meeting starts at seven, you don't need to be there until eight, whatever time. You can spend as much time there as little time you're there. So, we're hoping that, you know, a little less time commitment, people will be, more people will be able to attend. We'll have different stations set up so people can see the different information and react in different ways to the presentations. We also, interacting with our stakeholders, I attended a West Valley Community Council meeting, which is out in Frenchtown, and part of the planning area is within the West County, West Valley's Community Council boundaries, specifically the Smurfet Stone Mill Site and the Y. And they really, they asked if I could do some sort of workshop or outreach event out in the West Valley area, out in Frenchtown, because they have a really strong connection to the Smurfet Stone Site and, and to the Y. Those have impacts on their economic activity and also their cultural identity, and especially their school district. So, we said, yeah, sure, we'll... So we said, "Yeah, sure, we'll come out and we'll do some sort of event out there," which wasn't really a part of our game plan, but we thought it made sense. So I'll also be going to the West Valley Community Council meeting on June 14th, and that's open to the public as well. Yeah?
Why did you not include Frenchtown?
There's a number of reasons. First of all, they're not experiencing the growth pressures that we are around Missoula, but they also don't have the same issues related to planning and that we're having in the area right around town. We're having to talk about things like the extension of sewer and water and, you know, roads and sidewalks and transit, high-density housing. Those are the sort of the issues that we're having to talk about in this, in the planning area we've got. And I couldn't go out to Frenchtown and have that conversation. They would, I would get a boot in my butt, get kicked out of the room real fast. So we plan to update the map in those areas as well, but we need to, they really need a process tailored for them.
Are you going to do the same for Missoula?
The plan is to eventually get to every part of the county. Yeah, and Seeley Lake might have to have a different process too than Frenchtown does, you know? They have different issues up there as well. Yeah. Yeah. All right, and well, perfect timing because that's, I tried to keep it pretty short. So if you have any questions about anything, process, how the outreach has gone, specifically what people have been saying, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Andrew. Are there questions?
Let's have a comment.
Cool.
Which is great. I just, I wish we'd be more honest and make sure people understand that affordable housing and more open space making the place nicer don't necessarily correlate. And there's expenses to open space and more parks, and that's going to be taxes, property tax. So I just, you know, I just wish we'd be, you know, make sure people understand that, "Oh, I want this and I want that." And I don't think people get that, that the nicer we make the place, the less the houses are going to be affordable, which is just the way it is.
Well, just, I agree with you, Dudley. I think there's a fine balance to strike there, but I thought it was telling that folks are interested in housing developments along I-90, which as we know is probably less expensive land, and it doesn't make for great open spaceland. So I mean, I think there are certain corridors and spots throughout the county that could serve that need. Other comments or questions? Yes, Stephanie?
Just a question about the online survey tool. How many folks did you have respond to it total?
Yeah.
And then to follow up on that, I noticed it looks like they put in different places and then people can like comment and like that, but how many people were actually like going on and placing different things, or was it just a couple really interested folks putting in lots of thoughts?
So we had about eight or 900 people visit the site and open up the webpage, but then there was a huge drop-off where actually only 175 people placed a comment on the map. So something steered them away. And my thinking it was the survey, that it was weird, that it was, the way it was structured was you had to like click all these numbers and it was time-consuming and just annoying, and people wanted to get right to playing with the map. So the next round, we're going to have the online tool again. It's going to be asked, it's going to be totally different look. It's going to be, we're trying to address, you know, get to a different outcome, you know? It's more about specifically land uses, but we're not going to do the survey. So you'll, the webpage will open up. We're still going to, if you want to place a comment marker, we're still going to ask for your email. There's a couple reasons for that, because one is that if your comment warrants some sort of reaction, we want to be able to reach out to that person. The second reason is we are looking at this as public comment, and we want a little bit of accountability tied to the person that's making the public comment. So yeah, the email address seems adequate.
Thanks. And can I just ask one more follow-up? It seems like a really interesting tool. Has it been tested to be functional across browsers and on cell phones?
I think it, so I didn't receive any comments about it functioning differently. Like I, some people, I would get a call or an email once in a while, saying, "Like, this is weird," or "Can you help with this?" Never any comments or questions about browsers. I think it's, this is, I mean, this is, we didn't develop this. We didn't like write the script for it. This is a company. We purchased the ability to use it.
Correct.
So I think it's pretty well-tested on browsers. I don't know if it's cellphone-compatible. I've never tried it.
I'm having fun problems at work with something that's not cellphone-compatible, and that is, the reason I bring this up is because I found that that is a problem for some of the lower-income families that I work with, is that their access to the internet is on their cellphone.
Through cellphone.
So it is really important, I think, that we always make sure that things are, you know, transferred to that, because that is their access to websites.
I was going to check, but they don't have internet access, so on my cellphone, right?
Thanks for your work on this.
Yeah, I'll check it out. That's an awesome point. I, you know, I'm concerned, the demographic that I'm most concerned about we're not reaching is lower-income people. And that's not because of this project and specifically, that's any planning project. The lower-income folks are really hard to get to engage or reach out to. And, yeah, I think they're really impacted by projects like this, so it's definitely on my mind, so I'll take a look.
Well, thanks.
Yeah, Vince.
Yes, Vince?
Notice on the map, there's a real concentration of houses. Looks like I-90 West, maybe near, just before Y.
Yeah.
Did you have a sense of what that was about?
Yeah, that's a really good eye. So we were hoping patterns were going to form, and they did to an extent. I mean, you can see there's a lot of ag thoughts out in the Clark Fork Valley, which coincide with what people were saying in the workshop, so that's a good sign. But what we've got here is something special, and I looked into them, and what's happening is Desmet School has got a, they really want to get more housing around the school for a number of reasons, but one of them is attendance at their schools. They have room, and they're willing to take kids. They're a little bit, they don't have a ton of residential area in their school district. It's, a lot of it's the industrial park, and so they're worried about the longevity, the viability of their school over the long term. And so the school superintendent did an awesome job getting his planning board and the parents to get on there and participate. And so, yeah, we've got a little cluster, a pretty significant cluster of housing out there on the online tool. And you know what it does is it tells us, "We've got a constituency that we need to engage." And so, yeah, we've been directly talking with him. In fact, he left me a message today, and I didn't get back to him.
Yeah, Vince, just a little background for folks who are new to the board. As Jason and I were reminiscing, the school principal was at planning board about a year and a half ago or something like that, expressing his concern for a lack of a tax base to fund the school, but there was this massive engagement with the parents, and they wanted to start controlling kind of the permit process for new buildings out there, and it was like a whole thing.
It was a rezoning for commercial.
It was a rezoning, yeah. So, yeah, they're an interesting case in our county.
Yeah, there's been a lot of edit or comment, people have been sending letters to the editor in the newspaper recently, a lot of letters saying, "Rezone Desmet School," or "Support the Desmet School rezoning." There's no application right now to rezone anything out there, but they are just trying, they're trying to push that issue to get more housing. Yeah.
Yes, Jamie?
I'm the chairman of the Housing Authority Board, and they're speaking with and working with the school and all those interested in developing some housing out there. We're looking at, the Housing Authority is looking at doing a federally subsidized tax credit rental project out there amongst other possible projects as well, too. So I have, we're involved in that as well.
Yes, yeah, that's on the school property they're looking at that. So I've met with Lori and the developers of that project, actually, just to kind of get an idea of what they were looking at. Yeah. Good comment. Yeah.
So, in preparing for one of the cases we had today, I spent some time looking at the Butler Creek area plan from 1996 or '97. It came up tonight, question of, you know, if that would be updated soon. Will this project ultimately supplant that area plan, or how will it relate to it otherwise?
I really appreciate that comment, because I think multiple, you guys are thinking about this stuff. So the intent of this project is not to remove an existing area plan. The intent is it would, it would take precedent, it would essentially supersede their land use map, but the policy, you know, the written policy within the plan would still be viable. And so the reason, the area plans are part of our consideration when we start to develop the map, so we're going to look at the policy in these different area plans. It's theoretically, they should be one of the tools that we're using to help guide the formation of this land use map. Yeah. But some of these area plans are 20-plus years old, and so, and some of them are more recent. Some of them, I don't know if the community even knows they exist, where some of them, the community, it's like the world to them. And so we're listening to the public, too, as well. If they're saying, you know, "Listen to our plan, listen to our plan," we'll put more stock in their plan necessarily if no one even brings up the fact the plan exists. So we're trying to weigh those things to some extent, too, you know, within reason.
Can you speak to any of the comments that were in the Butler Creek area?
We, I don't think, oh, regarding the plan or just in general?
In general.
Okay, yeah. So they're actually kind of in line with the Butler Creek plan. When you drive up Butler Creek, people talk about protecting ag soils along the valley bottom there. And then the hillsides, people talk about lower densities or no density, you know, very limited development on the hillsides to protect, especially there were a lot of comments about elk in that area. So that's, you know, about the extent of it, with higher densities at the very bottom around Desmet School. So I think that's really similar to what the plan has, but I haven't actually looked at the plan in about a year, so we'll have to go back and review that. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, Andrew. Any final comments or questions?
Just one kind of last thing that just dawned on me. Did you do any, when you said you did kind of interested parties, a lot of times that includes maybe consultants or realtors or whoever. You know, one of the things that I think we saw even in the agriculture, you know, rules that came through was, I would like to see a specific mailing and maybe even a venue for people that, let's say, own 120 acres or more. You know, I mean, you can easily pull, cull that data. I feel like sometimes those large landowners are out working, and it's also part of their livelihood, is what we found out. You know, a lot of them were pretty upset about some of the things that were brought forward, because, hey, while we're out, you know, working our land and making a living, you guys are trying to tell us how to do something with it. I guess I'd like to see us making sure we're taking into consideration those landowners, you know? And maybe it's the 300 acres and larger, but I would like to see the large landowners represented and not just when they get upset that they come in. So I guess I'd like to see that they at least get some consideration and respect for that.
That's a really good idea.
Okay. Good. All right, well, thank you, Andrew. Thanks for coming in. Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
Okay, moving through the agenda here, folks. Do we have any committee reports? No? Okay. We have no old business, I don't think. Dudley would like to become our official planning board representative to Land Use Planning Committee and has asked for a general recommendation, so I thought we could have a brief discussion about that. Dudley, do you want to say anything?
Hold on. It doesn't have to be me. It just came up because I was visiting with John DeBari, who chairs the Planning Committee for City Council, because we were visiting about some other things. He's my ward representative, and he brought it up, that we had talked about going and telling them what was going on here, and, I mean, he could come here, too, or just letting him know where, what we were talking about, how people were thinking. And that's been bandied about here a few times, so I just brought it up again.
Well, great. I mean, Dudley, if you want to start going, that's great. You can use me as an alternate. I work downtown and I can pop in. Remember, Land Use Planning Committee meets on Wednesday mornings, so it's kind of a weird, it's like 10:00 AM.
I'm going to have to ask Heather though if, bad, I got used to getting all the good reminders from you about this meeting, and I missed the last transportation coordinating committee because I didn't get a little reminder. Who would, just if I, I'm happy to go to these meetings, so, but.
I think what Dudley's asking, Heather, is if you could send out a meeting reminder for the Transportation Committee meeting, and then also, who's on the, Jamie, isn't that you who's on the Growth Planning Commission? Because you and John went to the last one, right?
And I've already written out my calendar meeting this fall.
Right.
And I don't remember, it's August, it's September. That's the next time we're here.
Okay, that's the Urban Growth, what was it called? Urban Growth Planning Commission, something like that. Yeah, so Heather, if you could send reminders to folks about those three, LUP, the Transportation and the Urban Growth Commission, that would be great.
And I'll contact John about the.
Thanks, Dudley.
I imagine they all probably send out an agenda, so, I mean, I'd be happy to find out who sends that out and make sure.
Yeah, and that's what I, you know, I wrote, the council, Jordan Hess, I wrote him an email and said, "Oh, I missed it, sorry. Do you guys send out an agenda or anything?" And I never got a response at all, so I can try it out again.
Heather, if you could just follow up?
Yeah.
That would be great. Yeah, give us a point person.
Thank you. I got spoiled because you were so good about reminding us and sending out the agenda.
Yes, Lavelle. Hello?
Just jumping in and gathering you're looking at. So for the, which commission is it? The Transportation Policy, TPCC? And you're always on it?
Well, I'm on it now.
So you can just ask to get your name added to the contact list for when the agendas are posted, and they'll send that to you with the emails. If you're talking about.
Jamie's on the Urban Growth Commission.
That's a, yeah, I think you could, you should just be able to get your name added to that. They don't meet as regularly. But Heather, anything you can do to help, too? So.
Yeah, I don't actually know who, like, the contacts would be.
I'll make a note of the UGC. I think you're, for, it would be Aaron Wilson with the City Transportation Section.
A-R-I?
A-A-R-O-N. And I'll talk to him about it, too. And then the UGC is probably somebody else in our office, so it'd be you, Jamie.
I received an email from Pat O'Hearn about this fall meeting.
Yeah. It might be between the county and the city and both. I'll check with Alicia on that, too. Okay?
Thanks, Lavelle. And do you remember exactly when LUP meets? It is Wednesdays, right?
LUP meets on Wednesdays, yes.
Okay. Do you remember what time?
Lately, it's been starting at 10:00. It's not a reliable time.
Okay.
It floats around a little bit, and that isn't something that there's really a contact list for. You just have to, if you're interested in, you know, doing an update or something, work with the chair, John DeBari.
I'll talk to him.
Yeah, and you can, you know, he will work and let you know about the time. And then also, it's really a matter of checking it yourself through the websites and stuff for that, on times.
I took responsibility.
Thanks, Lavelle. So, yeah, Dudley, if you wanted to attend LUP once a month or something and give them an update, I think that's probably sufficient, but talk to John and see what he says. Thank you. And then Heather wanted us to just check in on how people are feeling about receiving paper versus digital copies of the materials for this meeting. Sounds like everybody but John gets the paper copies, so if you'd like that changed or have additional comments or questions, please let Heather know. Heather, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I actually got a little bit more information from Lavelle before the meeting. It sounds like what the city is working on for the different boards is, once the budget season is approved and things like that, they're hoping to be able to purchase laptops for the board members to use during meetings to actually pull up the meeting materials. So for right now, what the city has been doing and kind of checking in to see if this will work, you know, for the county items as well, is, you know, sending out the electronic version via email, but then having hard copies available during the meeting for each of you. So, you know, this meeting, the county, we didn't have those hard copies available, which I understand, you know, isn't the best probably practice for most of you, because it is nice to have that material in front of you. So just checking in if, until, you know, those laptops are available, if, you know, getting the electronic version via email and then having hard copies of the materials available during the meeting is sufficient for what you guys need.
Well, I, I mean, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, if I want to be able to review something that you present me before a meeting, it's useful to, I mean, that's useful for me. The laptop doesn't do me a lot of good by then. I have it presented up on the board and, you know, the, my notes I need to bring with me. So, the laptop is not going to replace paper for me.
Okay. Yes, Vince?
Yeah. I think I'm echoing a little bit about what Peter's saying. I mean, for me, if I'm reviewing something in detail, I print it out. I write on it and I bring it with me. And a lot of times, I come here and it's duplicative. You know, I've got the same thing sitting in front of me that I've already printed out. So, I mean, I'm sure everybody does this a little differently, but for me personally, electronic is fine.
So, I guess what we could do, because I think, you know, established when each board member comes on, I think, you know, we were supposed to ask if you'd prefer to have the hard copy mailed to you, excuse me, or the electronic version. And currently, like you said, John Newman's the only one that doesn't receive a packet. So, I guess maybe just checking in with everyone again, just to see if there's others that, you know, don't need the hard copy. And for the rest of you, you know, more than happy to continue providing that.
Okay. Well, why don't each of you just check in with Heather after the meeting and let her know what you would prefer about that. Okay. Okay. So, I do want to adjourn us here in a minute, but I wanted to just bring up something since we did have historic preservation on our agenda today. I, as I expressed, and maybe even Brian Upden, who's a neighbor of mine, expressed about the Willard School, the school district, the Missoula School District actually is a steward of a variety of historic buildings. And none of them are protected in any way. And after having many conversations with Superintendent Mark Thane and presenting at the school board, it became very clear that the school district has no interest in historic preservation. And Emmy has also spoken with Mark Thane about, you know, "Let's work together and figure out how we can get funding." And it's just not a priority for them. And so, you know, I see the frustration kind of bubbling up in my neighborhood specifically. We're facing a demolition of a historic building in my neighborhood, but I don't want to be all NIMBY about it. There are a variety of other beautiful historic schools in our area that I'm fairly confident will be demolished eventually because they're, they're not protected and there's no interest in protecting them. And so, I guess I wanted to just take a straw poll temperature of how the board feels about putting together either a resolution or recommendation for LUP to continue to work with the school district or even impress upon them the need for historic preservation. And if that's something that you guys would be interested in.
I would like to make one comment just on the other side. Not that I'm against historic preservation at all, but, you know, we're making history now too. We are. And whether we like it or not, some of the newer buildings are more energy efficient. And I don't know how much they've looked into it, but as far as, at some point, being efficient about the way we're spending our tax monies, if we're building a school and the primary objective of that school is to educate youth and have it high-tech or whatever it needs to be, then we got to balance that with how much it would take to preserve something. And I don't know if Thane's coming from that point of view or not, if he's going, "Well, I got to use this money the most efficiently I can to educate our youth. And that's my goal." I don't know if that's what he's coming from, but I just want to throw that out there that that could be a consideration. That's, that's all.
Yeah, I agree Dudley. And, you know, that is the charter, right? Conversely, and I can only speak to the Willard School issue, which I've kind of taken on a little bit. You know, they never did a feasibility study to determine the feasibility of the building. There's no paperwork. There's no engineer assessment. There was nothing done. It was just a decision that they need a new school, which again, I'm like, I voted for that bond, "Let's make new schools. That's great." But a lot of these schools could be repurposed, you know, whether it's condos or, you know, hotels or retail or, I mean, they're in, they're placed prominently in a variety of different neighborhoods. And so, there is kind of a reuse, repurpose option that I'm not super convinced the district is interested in following through on. You know, there have been mumblings, and this is from Mark Thane. He told me that he's had a couple developers interested in buying the Sixth Street Administrative Building for a hotel. I mean, I think that would be a great option. But I don't think that they have a lot of incentive for these kinds of big projects. And so, I would just like to, I guess I'm curious to know what others feel. Yes, Peter?
I'm sympathetic. I agree with you. And I, but I also agree that the school board is not in, has no incentive to try and preserve their old schools, except if it makes economic sense to them. But if they decide that the building is too old for their use, I can't see them putting resources into trying to sell that as a historic place. And I think they're going to need help doing that kind of thing. I've watched MIS use the school up in the Rattlesnake and deal with two or three or four school boards that change their opinion every six years about lease contracts and all the rest. So, I'm really sympathetic. I'd love to see us try and do something, but I think if we're going to get to the point where we ask the school board to pay for finding some new purchaser, it's going to remain low on their, low on their priority list.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. Yes, others?
I think it's a great idea. I mean, I think schools are fantastic buildings, part of our local history. I'm curious if, do you think any of the buildings in the school corporation's ownership are eligible or would be at the level or quality to be on the federal register?
Yeah, I spoke with Emmy earlier and she said that the administration building definitely is. The other ones were built around 1920 and maybe not, but she pointed to specifically the administration building on Sixth and Hellgate High School. Those would qualify as national register worthy. And she approached Mark about it, the superintendent, and, you know, he was like, "I'm not going to do that." So, you know, we just have these kind of fragile conversations, you know. I mean, the administration building is no longer a school. I mean, that's, it's offices. You know, they outgrew that area a long time ago. Others, I mean, I can't imagine them replacing Hellgate anytime soon. I feel like the university district would go up in arms. So, I'm not sure, like, what the vision is there, but I do, I would point to, in the mid-'90s, the school board actually hired an architectural firm to carry out a historic assessment. And they titled it something like, "Missoula County Schools, a Historic City of Our Town" or something. It has a funny name. And essentially, they cataloged all of the historic buildings that they had in their portfolio at that time. And of those, I think there's only like six left. I mean, there used to be like 20. And so, you know, this is just kind of this downward, downward trend. And they're, you know, they're not liable to the county because the county has no preservation, you know, obligation. And they are outside of city purview. And so, they're in this kind of nebulous free space where, you know, to Peter's point, it's kind of at the whim of the, whatever school boards there at the moment. And I would just love to have a little bit of direction for like the last four buildings possible. You know what I mean?
I think it's one of the more important ways in which the school corporation interfaces with everybody who doesn't have kids in the school corporation. These buildings, like you said, are sent often centrally located in our neighborhoods. They often provide parks for families or people that have animals or whatever. Anyway, I feel really lucky that the school I am most closely connected with, the Lowell School in the West Side Neighborhood near where I work, they, for whatever reason, their rehab project there did, I think, a really good job of preserving the old building and adding on to it and not tearing it down.
Yes, others?
I would love to know, I think it's a really good idea. I also am still a little vague about what we would be recommending or suggesting happen. But I generally, I think, yeah, I have lots of thoughts of why I think it's a good idea to move forward on this, but I would just like to know a little bit more from you, Helen, about what you're envisioning.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I was hoping to get some ideas from you guys too. You know, we don't really have any legislative power, right? We provide recommendations to county commission. And in this case, that's one of the reasons why this board specifically would have, I think, a little bit more weight, because this would go from, you know, planning board to the county. Obviously, the city is, I mean, we'd CC the city, but this is really a county issue. Or, and it's a school board issue. And so, there aren't a lot of kind of boards or groups that could provide this kind of guidance. And, you know, school boards only hear, you know, the crazy people in the background. They don't, they don't take on a lot of thoughtful suggestions often, especially from advisory committees and groups. And so, I just thought, you know, we're, we're, I'm not super neutral, but I'm a semi-neutral third party. I don't have kids in school, for example. And so, I would love to be able to provide that, you know, in the context of this group. Obviously, if the group is not okay with that, that, you know, that's off the table.
Why don't you draft some like what you're thinking about, resolution, and we could look at it?
Well, if you guys are, you know, feeling mild about it, I'm happy to throw something together and we can talk about it next time. Does that sound good?
Where I land with it is, I think it's fine to give them a, "Hey, have you considered that there's these resources available?" But I think at the end of the day, I'm more where Dudley started, which was, I get, I get more concerned with the tax values and costs that we have in our community. And I would hope that they are doing their best to run these schools efficiently. And if it means repurposing a school for a hotel because I can sell it and buy, you know, I think Lola was considering that. I heard rumblings, they have a different piece of property in Lola they could have moved to. And they did a big study. Do I rebuild at the existing site or do I move? And I support that kind of thinking. I don't think hamstringing them a little bit further, so I don't, I'm not in favor of doing anything that would, you know, get in the way of them doing the highest and best use of their property. So, I'm in favor of incentivizing them or giving them ideas, but not anything that would make it more difficult to run efficiently.
Well, I mean, the only, you know, as you heard from Emmy, the property owner is the one to make those restrictions on themselves. You know, I, I also think that we're kind of at this important crux because they've just gotten this huge influx of capital money and ops money. And so, they're feeling very supported by the community that we say, "Hey, this is all great. We support the kids. You guys need new schools. Got it. Let's not forget you are also stewards of these really important buildings. And if there's any way that we can help, or county commission, or city council, or, you know, the Historic Preservation Office in finding these, you know, maybe creative ways, you know, earning or tax credits or whatever the case is." You know, I just think they need to hear that voice. Because otherwise, it's, you know, Brian Upden and I yelling in the back about the Willard School, which is not the point. The point is this kind of greater conversation for the city and the county.
I'd like to just add too, because I, so, I work with kids all day long and I work with kids who work and who go to Willard School and who were really bummed to see what was going to happen with that building. And I work with kids who go to Franklin School and who, like, that, I do not like how they've redesigned Franklin School. It was a beautiful historic building in my neighborhood. Not historic, but it was like a really nice corner sort of the neighborhood. And now it's really ugly. And you can sort of sense it in the kids when they go to a school where it's not a building where they have pride of place. And I totally understand the need for new technology and new places and new things. But I think if we can show the, or show the county ways that they can be creative in preserving places where kids can feel good about going to school too, there's something to be said for the place there too and for the building that they're in and the history that's there, that you can't really quantify, but that's definitely happened. So.
Yeah.
Helen, I think there are resources that we could tap into. You know, whether it's the courts who, you know, ultimately say, you know, the school board is doing what they should or they shouldn't do, to, you know, like the Lowell School Board, I vaguely feel that we're with using resources, you know, legal resources to find out what their options are. So, you know, if you're looking for people that can help address, you know, sort of the broad responsibilities of the school board, I think we do, there must be people in the state that we can, somebody can talk to about.
Yeah. Well, it seems to me, yeah, a lot of, you know, I think a lot of you followed the, and sorry, I know we're a little over time, so I'm going to wrap it up, have followed the case in Helena with Central School. And that, you know, that was taken to court. And the court ruled in favor of the school district. And so, you know, when we were thinking, you know, and this is after like the last two years of my neighborhood figuring out how we can protect the school, or the building rather, because they're building a new school. And, you know, we felt like the courts were not on our side in that sense. You know, I mean, the court, at least in Montana, has decided that the school board has the jurisdiction and the authority to do whatever they want with the buildings, which I have mixed feelings about. You know, we pay for those buildings. They're ours. But anyway, so, yeah, I would love to have that conversation with you. But if you guys feel okay about me just bringing a draft forward and then maybe we can talk one more time about it. And if folks want to walk away, no hard feelings. I know this is kind of, you know, it's a tricky issue. So, thank you for listening. Yes, Jamie?
As a retired architect who did a lot of historic preservation work, I had 10 or 11 awards up in the wall in the office. I own a registered building downtown. I'm always sympathetic to historic preservation. So, I would urge you to bring something to us to see if we might think it's appropriate. And Jason, thinking about the school district and how well they manage our tax dollars. A few years back, they sold Roosevelt School to the Catholic Church. That block that it's on is platted into 20 lots. 20 lots equaled the value of the sales price, which means the Catholics got a school building for nothing. I'm not really impressed with the history of how they've taken care of their business, which is really our business.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, Vince.
I get going out, but while you're writing this letter, I had to...
Jason just keeps rolling away from me, so I feel like I need to wrap it up. Go ahead, Vince.
It occurred to me, even when Helen was presenting, I wondered if our city or county had done an inventory of our own historic assets that we own. And, I mean, it seems like, you know, at the end of the day, the school board is going to make the best decision for them in consideration of their mandate to provide education. And, but in order to consider the historic value of their buildings, I think they need to do an update of that inventory that you had mentioned.
Yeah.
And if they're resistant to that, which it sounds like at least their general manager or whatever is, maybe, I mean, maybe it could be something bigger. Maybe the city and county, if they were more amenable to doing an inventory of their own assets, historic assets, and ask the school corporation to join, to join them. I'm kind of thinking.
Hmm, I like it.
That's my idea, Helen.
Sounds good. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 9:05. Thank you.